Okay, we'll call our April 1st meeting of the Cookville City Council to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Womack?
Here.
Councilman Miller?
Here.
Mayor Shelton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wheaton?
Here.
Councilman Walker?
Here.
Five yes. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so, stand for the invocation given tonight by Mark Gall, pastor of Washington Avenue Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States flag.
Can we pray, please? One again, we thank you for this day. We thank you for our counsel, and we pray for God that you'll guide and lead them in the decisions they make tonight, and be glorified in those decisions. We just thank you for the city of Cookville, for this great city, and we pray for their leadership. And thank you, Lord, most of all, we think of this week as Passion Week, as you came to die on the cross for our sins, that through you we could have eternal life. Thank you, Lord Jesus. In your name we pray. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item 3, consider approval of agenda as presented. Any changes?
No changes, board.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All right, all vote. Bear with us all as we're implementing a new voting system tonight, so.
Closing the vote. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you for A, consider appointment to the Tennessee Central Heritage Rail Trail Authority. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, Heather Call has agreed to serve, and will be replacing appointee Brad Sales. We would recommend for the appointment of Heather Call to replace Brad Sales, and that would serve as the city of Cookville representative on the rail trail authority.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Closing the vote. Five yes motion carries.
4B, proclamation declaring the month of April as safe digging month with 8111 call. In an effort to bring awareness, April is recognized as Safe Dig Month. The Cookville Gas Department, along with fellow 8111 community partner, Middle Tennessee Natural Gas, is observing the importance of contacting 811 before you dig for the safety of our customers, staff, and community by proclamation, and will be submitting that for them. Jeff, do you have anything you need to add about that?
No, it's just, it's an effort that we've done for years, and it's just something to try and get more awareness out to the public for, just to help us and the public, for sure.
Very good. Thank you. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call, I'm sorry, vote, please.
Closing the vote. Five yes motion carries.
Under old business, 5A, consider approval of amendments council may hold on March 4th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Closing the vote. Five yes motion carries.
Okay, item 6, consent agenda. 6A, consider awarding bid for lawn care services for animal shelter in Highlands Park Media in the Public Works Department. 6B, consider awarding bid for lawn services for Water Quality Control Department. 6C, consider awarding bid for Transformers for the Electric Department. And 6D, consider declaring a surplus vehicles, equipment, and miscellaneous items for various departments. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion is second. Any discussion? All vote, please.
Closing the vote. Five yes motion carries.
Under new business, 7A, consider resolution R210408, authorizing participation in the public entity partners' property conservation matching grant program. Carl Sales.
Sorry. You can work that. I can get there. Carl, give him a chance to get back up. We're still on our system here, Henry. Make sure you switch over.
Mayor and council, this agenda item pertains to another matching grant opportunity provided to the city of Cookville by our insurer, Public Entity Partners. If you were to authorize the city to spend $2,750, PEP would match that sum, and that total would allow us to equip every entrance to City Hall, as well as each side, with video slash surveillance cameras, so that we could better secure the facility and provide a better service for our citizens as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions about that grant opportunity if you have any.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council?
Closing the vote. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. 7B, consider resolution R210410, expressing appreciation for outstanding services rendered by Sid Gilbreth as a member of the Cookville Board of Zoning Appeals. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, mayor and council members. Following over two decades of service on the Board of Zoning Appeals, Mr. Sid Gilbreth submitted his resignation from the board this January. As you guys know, these, the positions on the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission, they can be some challenging positions to provide service to the city. Resolution 210410 recognizes Mr. Gilbreth for his many dedicated years of service to the city, and we respectfully ask for council approval of the resolution.
Yes, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. I'll read this, if that's okay. Sid Gilbreth has served as a Cookville Board of Zoning Appeals member for 21 years, and has also served on the Planning Commission for three years. And whereas with a long-tenured career as a distinguished teacher, academic mentor, and professional role model in the Industrial Engineering Department at Tennessee Tech University, Sid brought extensive knowledge and foresight to the board. And whereas Sid Gilbreth has provided an invaluable service to the citizens of Cookville with his multiple terms as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals from February 1999 until February 2015, and serving as chairman from February 2015 until December 2020, and serving on the Planning Commission from August 1996 to June 1998, and serving as co-chairman from July 1998 to November 1998. And whereas citizen engagement and the dedication of time and talents within their inner workings of local government is a lifeblood of community, Sid has provided this with a servant's heart to the local community he calls home. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Cookville, that on behalf of the citizens of Cookville, sincere appreciation is hereby extended to Sid Gilbreth for his outstanding and dedicated service to the city as a member, vice chairman, and chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Congratulations, sir.
Moved.
Do I have to say something?
Step right up to the mic. I kept expecting to hear, "April fools."
We're not finished yet.
But thank you very much. My job actually, and the job of all the members of the Board of Zoning Appeals, were made very easy by the excellent preparation, research of codes, and providing all this information to each member on the board in timely manner, reliably, every time that we had a meeting. And so I'd like to compliment, first of all, James Mills, who was the first director under which we served, and his help, Ken. Ken's last name?
Young.
Ken Young, and of course Jane Barnes, and then later John Ward and Haley Dixon. They made it very easy for us to do our jobs. The other thing was, we always had very dedicated members of the board. And so, thank you very much, but the award really should go to everybody, not to me.
Thank you for your service, sir. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. We got a motion is second. Any further discussion? All right, all vote.
Closing the vote. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. 7C, consider resolution R210411, expressing appreciation for outstanding services rendered by Chris Wakefield as a member of the Cookville Municipal Planning Commission. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Shelton. This is, again, a resolution recognizing Mr. Chris Wakefield for his many years of dedicated service on the Planning Commission. Chris has served on numerous boards for the city and continues to serve on the Historic Zoning Commission currently. He's been on the Architecture Design Review Board and was on the Planning Commission for over 15 years. So I respectfully ask for council approval of resolution R210411.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All right, I'll read this as well. Whereas Chris Wakefield has served as a Cookville Planning Commission member for 15 years, and whereas with a prominent career in commercial real estate, a financial advisor, and small business owner, Mr. Wakefield brought extensive knowledge and foresight to the board. Whereas Chris Wakefield has provided invaluable service to the citizens of Cookville with his multiple terms as a member of the Cookville Planning Commission from January 2006 until December 2020. And whereas Chris Wakefield has served on the Architectural Design Board and continues to serve on the Historical Zoning Commission, and whereas citizen engagement and the dedication of time and talents within their inner workings of local government is a lifeblood of communities, Chris has provided this with a servant's heart to the community he calls home. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Cookville, that on behalf of all the citizens of Cookville, sincere appreciation is hereby extended to Chris Wakefield for his outstanding and dedicated service to the city as a member of the Cookville Municipal Planning Commission. Thank you, Chris. Would you like to come up?
Thank you for the recognition. It was, it's been a pleasure and an honor. Work under two great planners. The city's very lucky to have these, have had these gentlemen, and it was an honor and pleasure.
Thank you, Chris. All right. Got a motion is second.
Closing the vote. Five yes motion carries.
7D, consider resolution R210409, authorizing participation by the City of Cookville in national buy board purchasing cooperative. Ms. Simmel.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council members, state law allows local governments to participate in purchasing cooperatives. Purchasing cooperatives can save time and money by competitively bidding out goods and service that many use. They can get better pricing due to the volumes. The city is still responsible for complying with all state and local purchasing requirements if we use a purchasing cooperative. Buy Board is a national purchasing cooperative formed in 2010, and we are requesting your authorization this evening to join this cooperative so that some of our departments may make purchases off of it.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council?
Closing the vote. Five yes motion carries.
7E, consider approval of proposal for banking services. All departments and authorized city manager to execute a four-year bank service agreement with an option to renew for two additional one-year periods. Ms. Simmel.
Mayor and council members, we recently advertised for and accepted proposals for our banking services. We last accepted proposals in 2015. We received proposals from four banks. First Bank, First Horizon, Regions, and US Bank. Regions Bank is our current provider. We had several requirements through this process, the qualifications and experience. Primarily, we were looking for members to be, for banks to be members of the state collateral pool and have a local branch. Being a member of the collateral pool requires the bank to pledge securities to collateralize public funds, and the state administers that program. Some of the technical capabilities they were to provide, secure online banking services for various transactions such as transfers, ACH debits and credits, wire transfers, and remote deposit capture. And then, in terms of fees and interest, we required interest to be paid on the Fed Fund, on funds deposited indexed to the Fed Funds target rate. So to evaluate that, we used a 12-month average of all our transactions and our average balances to do a comparison of the fees and interest between the proposals. Based on the current Fed Funds rate of 25 basis points, the highest interest earnings to the city after service charges is with the First Bank proposal. They have proposed paying interest on all city funds deposited at Fed Funds rate plus five basis points. They are a Tennessee bank with their corporate headquarters located in Nashville. They are considered well-capitalized under federal regulatory framework, which is the highest of the five possible categories. They are a member of the state collateral pool, and they do have a local branch, even though they're pretty new to the Cookville area, Cookville market, and they can provide all the services that we require. And we recommend your approval of First Bank to provide banking services to the city.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council?
Closing the vote. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. 7F, consider approval to purchase various amenities and features for the King Creek Dog Park through the Omnia Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. Rick Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. It's my pleasure to bring to you this request to purchase amenities for our dog park. This would be purchasing a variety of items that would go inside the fenced areas of the dog park, including drinking fountains, the ever-popular fire hydrants for dogs, the crawl tunnel, a little hurdle, rover, jump over, hurdle, obstacle, dog walk, paw table, king of the hill, dog rings, jump-through rings. It also includes eight benches, trash receptacles, and pet waste stations. This is purchased through our, through play part structures, a company out of Chattanooga, and they're, they hold the contract with Omnia at this pricing. The total price is $29,510.06. And, hmm, the other one's not there. Okay, so I did have a map there for you of the layout of the dog park.
It's, it's.
Yeah, I keep going. I forgot.
Oh, there it is. Yeah. So you see some of those features in the layout. You have the small dog side, small dogs on the right side as you enter, large dogs on the left side. It's about 38,000 square feet of inside the fenced area. We'll be coming back to you later with bids on fencing and shade structures, but this pretty much gets most of the amenities that we will start out with anyway on the, on the way. It'll take about six weeks for those to arrive before we can begin installation, but we're poised and ready to do that. And I would be happy to answer any questions you have, and I would request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council?
Closing the vote. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. 7G, consider approval to purchase mobile communications terminals for the police department.
Mayor and council, these are lifecycle replacement items for our in-car computer systems. We're wanting to purchase Panasonic Toughbook. See the model number there. Complete system, 11 systems we're wanting to replace at $4,665.31 apiece. For a total expenditure of $51,318.41. These items are on a Sourcewell contract. They are budgeted items. $22,500 will come from one of our THSO grants, and the remaining $28,818.41 is budgeted in our drug fund, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council?
Closing the vote. Five yes motion carries.
7H, consider approval to purchase one passenger van for the police department. Chief Evans.
Mayor and council, we have a need to replace one of our vehicles. It's actually the litter crew vehicle. So we're requesting to purchase a four-passenger van. This item is on statewide contract. Vehicle cost is $40,018. Will require a budget amendment, but funds are available for this purchase, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council?
Closing the vote. Five yes motion carries.
7I, consider awarding bid for LifeScan fingerprint system. Chief Evans.
Mayor and council, this, as you stated, is a LifeScan fingerprint system. We solicited bids for this item. We had one bidder, which is Idemia. We're going to propose that we buy the desktop model, $17,733, and it does have a monitor upgrade. This item will be purchased from our FFNE funds for our new facility, and I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions from the council?
Closing the vote. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. 7J, consider approval of agreement with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for safety improvements at the railroad crossing at East Fourth Street.
Mayor and council, this agreement with the Tennessee Department of Transportation will pay for 90% of the cost for safety improvements at the Fourth Street Railroad Crossing. The National Eastern Railroad will also be installing safety improvements as well. The total cost of the improvements that Cookville will be performing is $3,195. The 10% match is our share would be $3,000, or $319.50. There's some pictures of what the license signage and lighting that we'll be doing, and the railroad will be installing new crossing signals. I'll request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council?
Closing the vote. Five yes motion carries.
7K, consider approval of amendments to Double Springs Utility District water purchase agreement. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, I'm seeking authorization from the City Council to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract amendment with the Double Springs Utility District. Double Springs has agreed to sell water to the city of Baxter to a development that's within their service territory. Current language in our contract with Double Springs does not allow it, so we have to do a contract amendment. If approved by the council, the agreement will be forwarded to the State Director of Rural Development for their approval. All terms and conditions of the contract, non-modified by this agreement, shall remain in force and in effect. City of Baxter has approved it, and the Double Springs Utility Board has approved it. Our current language is there and read, and that's the proposed language. The development they're wanting to sell to is down at the intersection of Highway 70 and 56, and it restricts Baxter to only sell water within that development only. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I would recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council?
Closing the vote. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. 7L, consider awarding bid for 2021 Oak Alley utility and sidewalk improvements. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we have a project. It's an alleyway between Oak Alley and another alley behind the Cream City. There's a sewer line that runs through there. It is broke down, and it only serves, it serves some of the businesses, but they're, some of them have rerouted, so. But it does serve the gas department's lower half of their building. We also have a bunch of meters that's sitting on some private property there. There's no water line in between. Had one property owner request a new meter to be set. We don't have a meter in there. Then we found the sewer line was broke down, so I remembered that there was some talk many years ago, James may remember the timeframe, about redoing that alley, and it sort of died. So I talked to James about, we're going to need to dig all that up and replace the sewer. We're going to put a water line through there, move all the meters, and get it fixed. And while we're in there, would be a good opportunity to do it. So we've met electric department, gas department. They think the electric's going to run the service line, their overhead's going to go underground, they're going to put in the lamp post. JFN is going to do some modifications wherever we run into conflicts. And so we bid that project out, and there'll be a sidewalk replaced in that area, which will give. And this is the area, most of you probably know where it's at. This is sort of the picture of the alley that James gave me the other day. That's a better picture than I had, so I'll use your picture. And we bid that project out. We had two bidders. Maple Construction was the low bidder, $152,820. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll be standing in this mode. We own one of the buildings. I'm a partner of a group that owns one of the buildings that is directly next to this, and we have donated right away for this project to the city of Cookville at no cost to the city.
Any other comments or questions? All right, all vote.
Closing the vote. Four yes motion carries.
Thank you. 7M, consider approval of changes to the Employee Health and Wellness Plan.
Mayor and council, in 2010, the city council approved the implementation of an employee health and wellness plan. One aspect of that plan noted, get fit, provided and continues to provide financial incentives to employees who voluntarily participate in a series of exercise activities within a specified timeframe. In 2016, the council again approved an enhancement to that program in the form of an insurance discount for employees who voluntarily participated and completed a different set of criteria. We have recognized another opportunity for the council to enhance the wellness of employees, both individually and collectively. That would involve employees voluntarily receiving a vaccination against the COVID-19. We would like to be able to provide a financial incentive of $50 for each employee who voluntarily receives a COVID-19 vaccination. We are seeking approval to spend up to $25,000 in the hopes that every city employee would receive the vaccination. That amount would allow us to vaccinate every current city employee who would like to participate in this program. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council?
If I recall, on Monday's work session, you said people who have already gotten the vaccine, they will.
Yes, if someone has already.
Has already received it, they will be given the.
Yes, that's correct.
Incentive. Okay.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, anything we can do to help our city employees, our police, our fire, our utility workers, our frontline workers, I want to help them out financially, so.
All right.
Closing the vote. Five yes motion carries.
That concludes the main agenda portion. We have time at the end for citizens that would like to address the council on non-agenda items. Do we have anyone? All right, nine A, we have received report, proposal, and recommendation from the Tennessee Central Trail, next phases from the Tennessee Central Heritage Rail Trail Authority. James Mills, in place of Melinda Kiefer.
Mayor and council members, I think each of you have in your packets the proposal recommendation from the Tennessee Central Trail Rail Authority. They undertook a planning process in 20, 1920, or 2020. I was looking at 19 to 20, but anyway. They have evaluated next phases for the rail trail and they actually have recommended two segments. One would go east and one would go west. Of course, the western portion, both as a venture of the trail, would connect with Kane Creek Park. But the first phase would be from the depot to West End. But they have submitted this and asked that the council receive this. They've also indicated that they would assist the city in our efforts to advance a westward expansion of the trail whenever possible. I would recommend your acceptance of the report.
Motion to accept the report?
Send it.
Second.
Motion a second. Any comments or questions from the council? All right, all vote?
Closing the vote. Five yes, motion carries.
Any comments from the council? All right.
Good job, Darren, on getting this, working us through this in the first meeting. We're joined.